We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Grady, will lead us in prayer. I ask you to please remain standing after the prayer for our pledge to the American flag.
How good and pleasant it is when people live together in unity. Remind us again, O God, of this divine vision which has given the psalmists much joy. Call to our minds the most wonderful moments in our lives, when we are overwhelmed with the abundance of your sacred presence, when we are confident in the work you have given us to do and the ability you have granted us with which to do it, when we are surrounded by dear friends on the occasion of life-changing events. Bring to our memories the countless times you have blessed us when we have most needed your blessing, with rain and times of drought, with shade from scorching heat, comfort in our sorrow, refreshment from the tedium of our labor. Then, having reminded us of all these things, reveal to us that all these joys, these many blessings, no matter how wonderful, are nothing compared to the pleasure to be found in the harmony of those who live together in unity. May we cherish and embody that joy this day. In your merciful and gracious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. Are there any items you desire to add or pull from tonight's agenda? Here none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
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 Okay, Commissioner Hunt makes the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We have several public hearings this evening. The first one we have is the Carts public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Kelly, if she will, to come just make a few opening comments, then we'll go into our public hearing. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. We're requesting a public hearing to receive comments in regards to the two grants that we're wishing to apply to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2024, 2025. One is the community transportation, formula-based allocation, 5311 for the rural public transportation projects, and we will be seeking to apply for the entire allocation of $441,820. The second is a combined capital application. It doesn't specify what grants that will go into yet. North Carolina Department of Transportation will do that at a later time. Within that grant, we're requesting to purchase two raised roof vans that would replace two light transit vehicles which have met useful life. In addition, some replacement cameras, to replace cameras that have gone out of warranty should we need, and a folding table for community outreach, and a portable language translation device. That brings the combined capital application to $211,522.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Kelly before we go into public hearing? All right, thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion that we go into public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Hunt. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor going to public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up. Is anyone in the audience that failed to sign up that desires to speak to the board? All right, here and seeing no one, do I have a motion that we go out of public hearing?
I move that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go back to the board, okay? See you in a bit. All right, the second public hearing we have is economic development. We have Mr. Jeff Wood. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. The Board is requested go into public hearing to receive public comments regarding the acceptance of a grant for the North Carolina Department of Commerce to fund the extension of a road necessary for commercial aerospace development adjacent to the Crystal Carolina Regional Airport. This is also under Departmental Matters, and the grant is for $1,77,694.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jeff before we go into public hearing? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion that we go into public hearing?
Move that we go into public hearing.
All right, we have the motion, a second.
Second motion.
Okay, second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have nobody signed up for this public hearing.
All right, again, is anyone in attendance that desires to speak to the board on this matter? All right, seeing and hearing for nobody, do I have a motion that we go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back to the board, and I think we have one more. Mr. Jeff?
Yes, sir. Craven County Economic Development Department has been working with a local manufacturer, has provided an offer to purchase 6.022 acres of land in the Craven County industrial park. Board is requested go into public hearing to receive public comments regarding this matter.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood before we go into public hearing? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion that we go into?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Vice Chair?
We have no one signed up for that.
All right, anyone in attendance that is desiring to speak to the board on this matter? Seeing or hearing for anyone, do I have a motion that we go out of public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hunt. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to the board, all right? We'll talk to you in a few. Thank you, Mr. Jeff. Item four is the petition of citizens. Mr. Vice Chair, we have anyone?
No one signed up.
All right, anyone here that desires to speak to the board? Hearing none, we move to item five, the consent agenda. There in the consent agenda, you have August 21st, 2023 regular session minutes, tax releases and refunds, the DSS share the warrant funding from the prior year budget amendment, recreation and parks, bench donation budget amendment, and military service person of the quarter resolution. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
And I second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Commissioners, the only thing I would add is we're going to need someone, item E, to present this military service person of the quarter.
I'm doing it.
You're doing it, all right? Vice Chair Booker's going to do it, so thank you for that. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, departmental matters. First matter we have tonight is Carts. Ms. Carol E. Walker-Cuthbert. Good evening again.
Good evening again, and I believe we have two items on the agenda. The first will be requesting approval for Carts to apply for the two grants that we mentioned before, the 5311 community transportation program and the combined capital application.
All right, Board, do you have any questions for Ms. Kelly?
No, I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, to apply for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, NCDOT 5311, community transportation program, and combined capital grants. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, all right? D?
Okay, and this is request an adoption of the updated drug and alcohol testing policy. The current policy was adopted November 1st, 2021, with an effective date of November 2nd, 2021. As part of the triennial review that's being conducted by the Federal Transit Administration, Carts has been instructed to add the sentence "Employees must abide by the terms of this policy as a condition of employment" to our current policy. And per those instructions, the sentence has been added to the end of the paragraph, identified as Section A, Purpose Two. Any other changes was for grammar and spelling. So again, we're requesting adoption with an effective date of September 6th.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the new policy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is for the adoption of the updated drug and alcohol testing policy. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, economic development. Mr. Wood, we have four items.
Should I stay closer to the microphone? The first one is, again, from the public hearing. We're receiving a grant from the Department of Commerce to help put a road into the aerospace development area for the airport. I've been a great joy being able to work with the director and the chairman on this project, as well as, important to note, we also received through the authority a $750,000 Golden Leaf Grant for the water and sewer. As you're going to hear throughout my presentation this afternoon, you know, product development is one of the two major factors that we're dealing with right now. We need this property. This will open up about 90 acres right along the runway, and we all, it's very hard to have a prospect until you have your product in place, but we do have private sector interest in it already because of how important it is. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood?
I move that we approve this.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion for Commissioner Mitchell, a second for Commissioner Smith, and this is to accept the North Carolina Department of Commerce grant and approve the budget amendment in amount of $1,77,694. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
Project Phantom. This was the other public hearing that we had. They're looking to purchase 6.022 acres of property, which will bring in revenue of $150,550 to the county. This is a locally grown company, another one of our success stories here locally, Phantom CNC Equipment. They're probably around a half a dozen employees right now. They're probably going to at least double in size with some ambitions of even going larger than that. They've been working with Tar Hill Construction, a local construction company, and they will be looking at, much like we've talked about on the next topic and in the past, lot nine and 10 on the northern side of the park. So before we were even able to start putting in the infrastructure, we already had a prospect interested in the property. They'll be going along Industrial Drive where the infrastructure is already in place.
All right, any discussion, questions?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the drafted resolution to authorize county manager to close on the sale of approximately 6.022 acres of property. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and C.
I wanted to make sure to do this one after, saying that the $150,000 in revenue was coming in, because now I'm going to ask for some funds. As you know, we have JMT as our engineers on staff helping us master plan lot nine and 10. The next step of this is for them to actually put together the design and the cost for the road that will be going in along with the infrastructure. That, along with some bid packet documents that our own engineering staff will have, which will help us with some cost savings for us to be able to do our own bids versus having engineering staff do that, or outsourcing that to engineering companies in the future. So the ask is for $131,500.
Okay, any questions? Jeff, would you mind showing me on here on this map you got? Where is?
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10.
Yes.
So if you look at, this will be the road, everything to the right of the road, so you're looking at seven, five, lots five, six, and seven. That's now currently lot 10. Everything to the left will be lot nine.
Okay, does everybody understand that then? So it's identified now as one, two, three, and four, and then on the other side, seven, six, five, six, and seven.
But it used to be nine and 10.
Correct. And more than likely, what we'll do is when we actually do break it up on our GIS, it'll probably, much like lot 19 had 19-1, 19-2, we'll probably just forget about 10 and say lot nine, dash one, dash two, dash three, dash four, and so on and so forth.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment in amount of $131,500? I have a motion from Commissioner Smith.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hunt. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and D, we have economic development update.
I'll run through this kind of quick. You can already see how the story is unfolding. We're in desperate need of property development on an ongoing basis. Recently just had a new lead, small company out of New Jersey, request something as small as 5,000 square feet, and struggling to try to figure out where that could go. We'll figure that out, I promise you that, but that kind of shows you how short or how small our real estate picture is right now. When you look at lot nine and 10, we already have private developers interested in buying some lots. Hopefully I'll be able to bring that to you in the future so that they'll do their own speculative buildings as well, keeping us out of the vertical construction business where we stay in prepping the land and building out the infrastructure. Same thing with what we're looking at at the airport. There's already some interest, again, of some private investments going into there and some end users. So it's something that we desperately need and will have to continue to look, much as we've talked about in the past. We've got 50 acres left and minus six now from lot nine and 10. That will hopefully, you know, knock on wood, continue to move as quickly as lot 19 did over the next four to five years or quicker. We don't have to move quickly if we need to save some property for specific kinds of target industries, for instance. That's at the will and pleasure of the board, but it will continue to hopefully move fast. And so we will have to figure out at some point in time where our next steps will be. We keep doing our due diligence on site selection for future industrial sites. The other issue, of course, for this year, just to give you an update, our unemployment rate sits at 3.6, the state is at 3.3%, and the United States is at 3.8%, possibly the longest time in the history of the country that we've stayed under full employment for this long. That's a great thing that people are employed. It is an extremely difficult thing for employers who are constantly battling each other for these, and we saw that last, the last time I was here talking about Project Indoor, that we're going to continue to have to be creative and work with companies to deal with workforce development issues, everything from the training, which is typically what we're used to dealing with, working with folks like the Volt Center and the Community College, all the way through K through 12. But we have our employers looking at daycare, trying to figure out how to work those pieces of the puzzle in, and quality of life issues, whatever they can do to put themselves into a higher position to be able to recruit and retain those employees they want to do, because they know that they're missing productivity. From what I can tell, from just talking to our industry, we are not in a downturn, but they definitely have seen a slowing of their products going out the door. That was to be expected. Everybody spent their vacation money on products when COVID started, and then they came back out and they vacationed in the South, and now they're vacationing in the North. And so I don't think that you're seeing anything that would show, from what I've been able to see so far, any kind of issues of layoffs, but you're probably going to see people try to slow down a little bit on those hiring practices. For one reason, there's not a lot there. So that's kind of something that we're going to continue to need to work on with them. Have had a series of meetings with FRC and BSH, and it was an amazing feeling to walk around. They both got to visit each other's facilities and see how they could work together. You know, from a manufacturing setting, there's nothing different than a dishwasher every 15 seconds versus a helicopter being rebuilt for two years. But they both have engineer needs, they both have technical needs, and they're getting to work together, and it was an amazing feeling to walk around knowing that this represented 5,600 employees between both entities of our fellow neighbors. And trying to start with them, what works for them, then we'd be able to work through our entire industrial sector and others. Continue to work with the TDA and the airport, the C1A. We can have a real working team across the board, because, as you know, I mentioned quality of life issues, that's going to fall into tourism. And, you know, we have a specific edge when it comes to recruitment, when it comes to having a quality of life, that we're going to have to continue to push and build on that product, to be able to help them recruit people in and keep people and retain people. And so those connections have been extremely critical, and I'm happy to say that, you know, the airport marketing committee, everyone meets and talks about the different things that everybody needs, finds those synergies, looks at cost savings to be able to make that work. And then from an internal standpoint, from your department, I'd like to give a shout out to our IT department. This year, we have had a need for a contact database, a project database, which would cost tens of thousands of dollars, and our IT department did it at no cost. And so still trying to figure out the best way to do those cost-saving measures and to be able to continue to work together. So with that, I think you guys know about the ASI ribbon cutting. We've had that earlier this year. HDPE, they closed on their property. They're going to be expanding, that will open up a 5,000-square-foot building for me to be able to market on the northern side of the park, so excited about that. So it's been a successful year where you continue to see Craven County's multifaceted economy grow at that steady pace of growth versus what you could see in a unipolar economy where you live and die off of one employer. So we're very fortunate with that. So with that, I'll stop talking, and if they've got any questions, I'd be more happy to answer.
Commissioner Howard?
Just commenting question, congrats on job well done on all these things that you're developing. I'd have a question. Had a friend recently that inherited 80 acres of farmland here in Craven County, couldn't sell it as farmland, so they're probably going to sell it as, much easier to sell it as residential. Do we have any kind of, just general question, thought on preserving agriculture as part of, or is that just going to be priced out of the market here in Craven County at some point with land cost? Is that kind of a question not in your area? I'm not sure.
It's not necessarily in my area. Typically, stay industrial development. We did bring in some folks from UNC, the C1A paid for those consultants to come in to look at agricultural opportunities, looking at things like, could we have an aggregation point? Because there's things that we can do to help market those products a little bit better. It's definitely, and Chairman, you would be able to speak to this better than I would be able to, it's definitely tough. You've got legacy farms and trying to figure out that piece, and also that diversification of product is tough. I do think that there are some opportunities that we could look at, particularly in livestock, that I think that would be beneficial. But it's also, they're feeling pressure not only from who's going to own the farm after the fact, but all of those feedstock products, that while we felt it at the pump, they felt it in the fertilizer. So there's a lot of pressure that goes on in our farming community, but it's an integral part of not only Craven County, but all of eastern North Carolina.
Thank you. Good answer.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm sorry, then we'll move on to, two questions. You've been here seven years?
Four and a half.
Four and a half. We've seen a huge expanse, expansion in our industrial park in terms of companies that have come in with jobs and commercial tax base. I really would like to see a accounting of year by year, what was the increase in the number of jobs that our economic development program has brought in, you know, 2018, 2019, and also the increase in the commercial property tax base. Did I make my question sound, obviously I don't expect you to pull it off the top of your head, but sometime in the next two to four weeks, I'd sure like to see that.
Sure.
Because that's been substantial growth.
Yeah, I can say with lot 19, you know, we had the announcement of Bass Pro Shop and Whitewater Marine coming in, and I made sure to have some reporters go over and talk to Carolina GSE and all the other folks that have done everything from create 10 jobs to 25 jobs, because when you look at all the employees that went into that area, you're looking at a couple hundred jobs, you're looking at 100 new jobs, and then, of course, Titan Fuels putting their facility there, helped them keep that 80-some jobs. So that alone within the park has been a huge win, and that's why these conversations about infrastructure is so important. The ability for that road, this was prior to me, and then Jack would have to speak to it and Jean a little bit better than I would too, but for that road and that infrastructure to be in at the right time, and then we were riding a wave of getting that water and sewer extended along that road and selling property and going home thinking, boy, I hope we get that water and sewer in before, you know, as they were building out, and we're seeing the exact same thing with lot nine and 10. So it's just staying ahead of that wave of selling these properties and making sure that that infrastructure in place. It's a balancing act for sure.
It is. I want our citizens, when our citizens say, what does the economic development program do for us? I want to be able to say, well, in 2019, it brought in 112 jobs and $50 million in commercial tax base, and in 2021, it brought in, but I think we need to be tracking that.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I have a question. Considering you are stating that our landmass, our acreage is getting limited, and industries are requesting business by the square foot, what is the possibility of offering multi-level properties? I think we might get more bang for our buck if it's possible. Some industry might be able, if we had a multi-level property, we wouldn't use as much property for, or several industries perhaps.
Yep, Commissioner, we get requests both for acreage and square feet. I will say that when you look at the State Economic Development Office and our Regional Economic Development Group, typically it is square feet. When you look at multi-story product, when we start moving into the world that we're going to have to be in of having engineering jobs. If you, if you visit BSH today, the amount of robotics that are going on in that facility, the investments they've made over the last two to three years is amazing. It's astonishing. And at first, it might be a little concerning, because that used to be a job.
Right.
Well, now there's a job behind those robots to make sure those robots can actually work.
Right.
And that's everything from coding to mechanical engineering, software engineering, and electrical engineering. And those jobs are the jobs that I would like to see us be able to target, and those would be multi-story opportunities for us.
There are possibilities there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just wanted, would like a copy of that infographic you're creating for ET. Also, that's a good idea.
You'll get it, Jack will have it for the whole board, so yes. All right, anything?
We're not going to give you a copy, only she gets a copy.
That's right. Just for me, because I'm special.
Great idea.
Jeff, we do appreciate what you're doing on behalf of the citizens here. I will just say, our airport folks here, they're going to make a presentation. I will just say, our airport folks here, they're going to make a presentation. Jeff is a vital part of our airport authority board. He offers a lot, and I think they'll echo that when they get up here. But it's good to see him at a meeting. He is energized, he's ready to go, he's always got ideas. And sometimes, we're a little bit, I'm a little slow in responding to some things. But we appreciate you. Thank you for what you've done.
Always bring good information.
Yeah.
I try.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Commissioners, we have the Airport FAA grant funding approval this evening. We're honored to have with us Mr. Andrew Shorter, our Airport Director, and also Chairman of our Airport Authority, Mr. Harrison. After he finishes his presentation, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to, if you just come say a few words to him. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate your time tonight. Jeff is a tough act to follow. He's, you know, I call him the ideas man. And it's great to have him working with us at the airport. This one tonight, I wanted to start out by saying it's a simple one because it's the normal FAA Airport Improvement Program annual grant. However, there is a little hitch to it in the fact that we actually do not have the grant offer in hand. However, again, it has, that grant offer has to be signed and returned to the FAA by the 15th of September. So they've kind of backed us into this corner. This happened in the past, but we haven't had to do it in a while. So what I'm going to be asking for is you authorize the Chairman to sign this grant when it comes in and hopefully, the next few days, so then we can get it back to the FAA by the 15th, which, of course, is important for their federal fiscal year. So this grant is a final, final follow-up grant for the terminal improvement project. And there's also a small portion of it to do an airport air traffic control tower siting study. So the current tower that we have now was built in 1974. It still operates efficiently and effectively. However, that's getting a little bit long in the tooth, even, you know, for FAA governmental-type buildings. So the first step in the process of getting a new tower is doing the siting study. So they, even though the tower is where it has been since 1974, they want to survey the whole airport and see if there's a better location for the tower. So this is the first thing that they do with this study. So we've already, the authorities approved some money to the FAA for a reimbursement agreement for them to start the engineering on this. And so this part of the grant would be in a reimbursement for that. And that's going to be $205,000 of this grant. Actually, the grant's going to be 180,000, 90% of that. So the other 4.678954 is for the terminal, Part One, the continuation of that. I was just here about 60 days ago, and we did the $5 million grant, the bipartisan infrastructure law piece of that for $5 million. So this final piece, which 3.492 million of it is discretionary, over and above what we get annually from the FAA, is for the terminal. So nice assist again by the FAA for more discretionary. So the first year, we got $10 million discretionary. Then we got the $5 million that we just did 60 days ago, and now another 3.492 discretionary. That means that's competitive in those three amounts, that we've gone out with the FAA, had a good project, had a high priority project, and got this money for it. So in total, this grant should come in, what we applied for is 4.8 million, 4.866211. So $4,866,211. I wouldn't ask you to approve that amount in case it comes in differently, but I would ask you to approve the Chairman to sign the FAA grant when it comes in. And we believe it's going to come in for that, but until it's officially released, we don't know what the exact number is. It would most likely be lower than that number. So that would be my recommendation, sir.
Any questions from Mr. Shorter before we entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith, and this is to authorize the Chairman to sign the FAA grant agreement when received. Any further discussion on a motion? And Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Shorter, why are you here, Chairman? If you don't mind coming up. I think I asked you, and you hinted on it, but talk a little bit about our terminal expansion and exactly what we got left to pay for.
Okay. So starting this month, we're 12 months into the two-year project, so that's good. Everything is still on time and on budget. Just last week, they poured the slab for the 10,000 new square feet that they're putting in. So they threaded the needle with the weather last week and got the whole slab poured. So this company's a very efficient construction company out of Wilmington, Montee Construction. So where we are with all this money is the construction is $25,700,000. And then there's the engineering and onsite inspection and things that brings it up to $26,900,000. And currently, we have collected in grants, check my math here, $26,900,000. So the AIP portion of this, Airport Improvement portion, is always only 90%. So there's always a 10% match. However, with terminal projects, the whole terminal is not 100% authorized to be paid for by AIP money. So that left a little bit more hanging out. So what we've done for that money is our state, we call it North Carolina Airport Improvement Program funding, which we're getting the last two years, about 1.7 million a year from the state of North Carolina. All 10 commercial service airports get that funding every year from the state of North Carolina. So that's covering both our 10% match and what equates to about a 4% ineligible for the FAA federal money to cover the complete $29,600,000 of the project, $26,900,000 of the project. So we are not having to pay any out-of-pocket money. And the important thing there, we're not borrowing any money to do this. And that's a big line when I talk to airlines and I talk to potential future airlines, because they want to know how much it's going to cost to operate the airport. So this factor allows us to keep our rates low to the airlines now and into the future. And that's what they want to know. Well, not just now, but how's that going to be? And the fact that we're not going to borrow any money is a slam dunk with the airlines.
So good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I know as most board members do understand, the airport is owned by the taxpayers of this county, and you, as the county commissioners, represent it. The Airport Authority leases that property, and we operate that airport in your stead through your appointments as well. Last couple of years, I would like to think that we have really moved the airport forward as far as projects and infrastructure is concerned, and we're not complete yet. None bigger than this $27 million renovation of the current 22-year-old facility, as well as the new part, the new baggage claim part of the facility as well. We need to be competitive in the airline business, and I think this will bring us up to that current kind of standards. At the same time, with the infrastructure of the facility, the new road that you've assisted with as well, that allows for the lengthening of the runway to be competitive with the larger aircraft that's required today. Equally, the board has been very involved with marketing of the airport. And so I'd be remiss if I did not mention, as the C-1A Director, Economic Development Director referenced as well, about the marketing committee and the number of partners that we put together. That's been really fortunate, chaired by Jeff himself. So yes, as you referenced earlier, Mr. Chairman, he's been critical to the board as well, along with the interest and the support that we've received from the county commissioners as well. Together, we've made great strides, and I know we'll continue to do so. Two important people with that, of course, are the county manager that works closely on a weekly basis with Andy as well as Jeff also. So for that, we're appreciative. We have an open invitation to any members of the board that's here to come receive a brief, a walk-around, et cetera. Some board members have had the opportunity to do that. We welcome the remainder of you. You can find time, maybe when it gets a little cooler than it is the next few days. With that, thank you for your support.
Any questions for Chairman? Yes.
You touched on two things that I was curious about. One was the expansion of the runway and the road. And you may not be the person to answer this, but where are we on that project? And for the public who maybe haven't heard about this, to bring the bigger aircraft in, which some of the airlines and probably all the airlines are going to want to do in the future, we need a longer runway. And to do that, we need to move a road. Where, can you kind of give us a date on that?
I'll start it, and of course, Andy will know the details of it. But the road in question is Williams Road, which intersects with US Highway 70 as well.
It's the road, for everybody's information, that goes right beside the Food Lion Shopping Center.
It does, and onto the GA facility as well, and the back route into the airport. It is in the process of, no surprise, through the environmental assessment that's going on now with certain engineers who do that as well, to see how that is done. As you're aware, the Scotts Creek Tributary, et cetera, is an issue there, and seeing how best to do that with not harming the environment as well. That process, I think, was nine or 10 months overall and will be complete sometime this spring. Andy can correct me if he's got additional information.
Should be completed in April. Interestingly enough, Patrick's going to help escort the, and that's our Airport Operations Manager sitting there for his leadership Craven class, but he's going to be helping escort the environmental engineers tomorrow to do their assessment. So it's been kind of planning and paperwork up to this point, working on three alternatives for how that road would be routed or further around the end of the runway. So we expect that, again, in April. Some design will go into that, but right after that, DOT will be into the design of the road. We have the $8 million from the state legislature for that. That's in the bank right now. And so we're waiting, and it'll likely be a DOT-led project for the road.
Okay. And does that mean, then, that once the road is moved, so that's probably a year and a half, two years out, do we physically expand the runway? And then what is the timeframe that would take us to do that?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking for kind of a ballpark. Are we three years out from doing this, making this happen? Or where are we?
So, good question. And part of the environmental is also the environmental to extend the runway. So with the federally-led project, even though it's a state road, we had to do that environmental together. So that'll clear us to extend the runway as well. And we have that program for federal fiscal year '26 right now. And that will add, here's a definite little point of this, just by moving the road, we will get a longer runway. Because right now, we have some mathematical engineering limitations that pilots have to account for for the length of our runway. So once we move the road and move an obstacle, an antenna off the end of it, the runway will kind of effectively get longer. And then we'll go in and add some more asphalt to get it to likely 6,600 feet, which is a good sweet spot for larger aircraft, as you say.
That's another 400 feet.
Yeah.
Thereabouts.
Once you add those two numbers together, it's about, because going one way, it's different than going the other way, but a maximum of 600 feet, which is a nice bit of length for a runway. You know, every 100 feet or so on a runway can mean pretty great differences in performance.
Sure, sure. Because currently, Mr. Vice Chairman, in the summertime, when it's more difficult for planes to take off, weight's a problem. So that can be seen even in less passengers that can receive it.
Understood. My second question regards the search for an additional airline to come into our airport so we're not beholden to one carrier, which we are right now, I believe. Do we have any news other than we're working on?
In the last month, I've had meetings with four different airlines. Next month, or the end of this month, we have a meeting with another airline. It's kind of like the economic development world, where you almost put code words to it because it gets to be a, you know, if they're really thinking about here. But we've talked to, of course, American, we talk to them all the time, but we've talked to Delta again. People ask about that. But they have not returned to any of the airports, the 17 airports that they suspended service from. Talking to United, which is good. We're talking to JetBlue, and then we're talking to all of the low-cost carriers that you see in all of these other places. So they're all very, or somewhat interested. The fact that we even get these meetings with them means that there's an interest because they don't just meet with everybody. So that's good. But it, again, like Jeff's economic development world, it's a process, and it's a long process. But we've been making inroads, and so I'm energetic and optimistic that, you know, we'll have something come about as time goes on. There is a severe pilot shortage in the country. And for regional airlines, it affects them more than the mainline because that's how pilots fleet up. So we're fighting kind of a headwind on that, but we have a great product for them. We have a low-cost airport. We have a great destination, which is becoming a big thing for them to look at. And we will continue to sell our market. And it's really, the airport's a little bit independent of this. It's really the passengers and the airline make the market. And so the airport just needs to be prepared that it can handle any airline of any size coming in for any amount of service.
You know, the pleasure of people flying has kind of, has come back. The business community has not fully come back yet as well. The pilot shortage is the real issue and will be for another year to two, unfortunately. But that does not mean that we cannot be successful in securing an additional carrier.
I think you need to tell them all, they better hurry up because somebody else will beat them to it if they don't.
Well, and that's a good point. You know, the Commissioners have approved the money to match the federal grant, the Small Community Air Service Development Program grant. And that's one grant that we have. And quite frankly, they could fight over that if it came down to it. So, you know, the first will have the availability to use it.
Last thing I would just say, excuse me, is, Mr. Chairman, I think in the last couple of years, I've seen real positive things come out of the, out of your board and what's going on at the airport. And I just want to commend both of you for, and you, for what's been going on out there.
Well, it's been a real, it's been a real team effort, with the number of individuals working together. We could not have been as successful as we've been without the board. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith?
My question is back at the runway expansion. Do you own now the property that you, that's needed, you do?
Yes, ma'am. And that was a big thing, obviously, for the DOT. They get in those issues all the time. And so that, we think, will help streamline it once we get to the construction phase.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Last thing I would just say, getting back to the terminal expansion, when Mr. Shorter brought it to our board, talked about it, Airport Authority, I will, they know, I was very reluctant in supporting it myself because that's a big amount of money. But for him, and he said this to us at our last Airport Authority meeting, that it's almost paid in full, and it did not come from local funds. And so I think if anybody takes anything away from this meeting this evening, there's a lot of great highlights that you shared with us, but that's exceptional. It's going to be paid in full, and we didn't have to borrow no money. So thank you for what you're doing, going out and seeking these funds. We appreciate it, so.
It's all for the community, and we love doing it, so.
Y'all have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item nine, we have facilities, the approval of the budget amendment, reauthorization purchase of air handler, Mr. Gene Hodges.
Hey, good evening, board. And like usual, I can't tell the short story, so. So for several years now, Craven County Facilities Department has provided oversight and management of facility maintenance and capital projects for the New Bern Cove City and Vanceboro branches of the Craven Pembroke Library System. Immediately after the events of Hurricane Florence, staff began to notice significant selling issues in the older part of the New Bern branch library. Based on past experiences with other facilities, it was decided to contract with the team the county worked with on the convention center. Engineered foundation solutions from Durham and accident reconstruction analysis from Raleigh were consulted and provided the attached scan and report of their findings. It was included in the board packet. To facilitate floor repairs, it's going to take the library offline for a considerable amount of time and require the replacement of the floor coverings throughout the facility. During the temporary closure, facility staff has recommended replacement of the air handler units throughout the facility that have met useful life and have required numerous repairs. One unit in particular is located in the middle of the building, and there is a possibility of minor demolition and reconstruction that will be required to change out this unit. Anticipation of these needed repairs, library staff has contracted with the city of New Bern to lease a temporary location to serve the patrons of the New Bern branch. This lease has a term of one year and commences on September 15, 2023. Craven County is working with local representation, General Assembly, in an attempt to obtain a grant to assist in making the repairs needed for the New Bern branch. The estimates to make all the needed repairs is approximately $1 million. In the current building market, there are significant lead times for commercial-grade HVAC equipment. Based on estimates from Piedmont Service Group, the vendor that has provided HVAC services at this location for years, the preliminary cost to replace all three air handlers is $328,000, and it will take six to eight months to obtain the equipment. Staff is recommending the Board of Commissioners approve a budget amendment, the amount of $350,000 funded from Capital Reserve. This will enable staff to put this work out for bid and issue a purchase order to the approved low bidder so the equipment can be ordered and put into production as soon as possible. And I've got staff here, mainly Zach, back up, if there's any questions. And again, the request is approve a budget amendment and then authorize to move forward with obtaining pricing and issuing for this equipment.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hodges?
I have. So I wasn't tuned in to county buildings in 2018. I was more focused on where I was working at that time. Did we get any insurance money or FEMA money to offset the cost of repairs after the Hurricane Florence?
There weren't, there weren't, the selling, you can't contribute, you can't attribute the selling to Hurricane Florence, much like we've tried the engineers to, you know, have those conversations. You can't get You can't get anybody to say this was, this happened because of this. It's just because we have such poor souls in a lot of downtown New Bern. We're going to have a lot of selling issues with every facility we've got.
How old is this building?
The older part of the building is early 1960s.
Yeah, if I may respond, since I started out on that particular library board, we were lucky enough to have an architect on the library board for a number of years. And one of the things that she pointed out that I had never thought of is a library facility is heavier than most buildings because of the weight of the books. Because we had thought about, well, could you build up? And she said, no, you can't. You, you need to spread the weight out lower. So a library plus the weight of the books is going to be heavier and have more issues with, with foundations.
It's just coincidental that, that's.
It was just, we're doing the, doing the building reviews after the storm, seeing if there was any type of damages, when it really started to realize, it's really when it starts to come to noticeable that there's a challenge there and there's a problem.
Yeah, I didn't say it. Walk into there.
Gene, may I?
Sure.
So there's practicality to what we saw before and what we saw after. I think what Gene's saying is it's really difficult to prove.
Yeah.
That's been your challenge. But we know it didn't settle that much before.
Right.
Something caused it to start settling. We believe that's Hurricane Florence, but one thing FEMA's not is practical.
All right, additional questions?
The only thing I want to add is Commissioner Mitchell and myself serve on the regional board. At our last meeting, we did approve a contract lease with the city of New Bern. They have approved it. You've read about it, I know, and the paper's been in the media. But I just want to say on behalf of our Board of Commissioners and on behalf of the library board, we appreciate the city of New Bern and working with us to find a location that we can move to for the next year as a satellite. Because we could not do this work unless we moved out. And it's going to disrupt. So they've been very cooperative, and I appreciate their board for what they've done. So just stay that for the record. Any other comments? All right, here none. We need a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So would.
$350,000. We have a motion, Commissioner Mitchell, Second Commissioner Hunt. This is also to authorize staff to attain pricing and issue a purchase order for the HVAC equipment for the New Bern branch of the Craven Pemaco Library. We have a motion, and a second discussion on the motion.
I, I have a question on the budget amendment. We're talking 350, but I'm seeing 700.
That always, that's, that's our great Mr. Craig Warren, that's how he adds.
That's the in and out.
So, General Accounting Standards says this was one of the. To the next, it's coming from Capital Reserve. It's got to go from Capital Reserve to the general fund, then it goes into the capital outlay. You got to show it in and out like in a, in a U.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody's.
It's 350, but.
I don't, okay.
You don't have a degree in accounting?
No, I, that's why I was an English major.
All right, any other questions? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, next, we have item 10. It is the appointments. You have the pending, current, and upcoming. Under pending, do we have any, from any Commissioners? I would like to ask the board, at your desk, you have there an application from Mr. John Carroll Hawkins from Cove City, who has put an application to serve on the Craven County Planning Board representing District Two. I would like to add his ask that the board would consider him tonight. And if you have no objections, I would offer his name for this position, nominate him.
Second.
Okay, we have a consensus. Are there any additional nominations? All right, here none. We will accept Mr. Hawkins by acclamation. Thank you. Are there any others that any Commissioners have? All right, here none. Under pending, we will now move to current. You have the JCPC, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Tracy Monk does not seek reappointment. You do have the applicant of Pastor Blake Larson that seeks to fill the seat vacated by Sharon Logan.
I'd like to recommend Blake, Pastor Blake Larson.
Okay, we have the nomination of Blake Larson. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. We will accept Mr. Larson by acclamation. So Clerk, in what I'm understanding here, we have, actually, we have two appointments. What's on the paper? Correct?
Yeah, Tracy Monk is leaving a vacant.
But that is a vacant seat.
Right, it's a specified seat.
Is a specified?
Yeah, and Ms. Stacy's working on that.
It's a specified seat, so.
What are the specifications?
That's what I'm pulling it up.
Okay. All right, while she's pulling that up, we will go down to upcoming terms. You see the Adult Care Home Advisory, Craven County Clean Sweep, Fire Tax Commissioner Board, and the JCPC Board.
Are there two more people whose terms are coming up?
Yes, yes. And if you don't mind, Ms. Nan, on those upcoming, if you will put on there if they are citizen seat or if they're specified.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Let's see if I can find this.
All right, she's still looking for that, and that's fine. We'll give her a little time. We'll come back to that, Commissioner Smith. Next item is the county attorney's report. Mr. Grady?
Mr. Chairman, your report.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, item 12 is the petition of citizens for general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
No one.
All right, anyone in the audience that failed to sign up? All right, seeing no one, we will move to item 13, county manager's report. Mr. White.
She is an attorney.
She is an attorney, okay. Say we would have to have an attorney. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thanks for opportunity. I got quite a bit of updates tonight. I'll try to be brief as I can with them. I do want to go ahead and get a couple of things on your calendars. Why we start, October 16th, 2023, is your, I guess, next October day meeting. We would like to schedule a work session with you after the regular meeting, if possible. And Mr. Hodges, we're still contemplating maybe a groundbreaking ceremony over the DSS building? Is that still tentative, or are we good to confirm on that?
Everybody knows that's the goal we're going for, so yeah.
So we'd like to do a shovel turn-in ceremony and then come back and do a quick work session. I don't think it would be, somebody'd have you here to five o'clock, but probably to two that day. Just covering some issues that we've got ongoing.
So roughly two o'clock?
Yeah. Yep. We would do lunch that day, of course. Also, tomorrow night, September 6th, and Mr. Wood didn't mention, is our annual Craven County Economic Development C1A Annual Meeting. It happens to be a board cherry point, which we're really excited about. I know some of you signed up. If you haven't, there's still time. It's going to be a great event. And I know Mr. Wood's got a, a lot of great speakers tomorrow night, and a lot of good news to share, kind of what he did tonight, just maybe a little more in-depth there, so. But that is tomorrow night. And I believe Jeff, 4:30, correct?
That is.
4:30, okay. So on September the 12th, I've invited a gentleman by the name of Parth here. He runs a company called Polymorphic. They're a data analytics company. And if you were with us, I think Commissioner Hunt, Commissioner Mitchell, and Commissioner Howard in Raleigh last week, or a couple of weeks ago for the NCA ACC conference, and you got to meet Parth and what his company's up to. He liked to come by and demo some software that he has. And if it's more than three Commissioners, obviously, we could do two sessions, but September 12th today, he can be here. He's working now with Gaston County, Polk County, and I believe a couple more counties in the western part. And they're doing some really great things with tracking data and dealing with constituent issues. It's amazing. Chad, you spent a lot of time with Parth, Commissioner Howard, excuse me, spent a lot of time with him, looking at his product. And he, he's a really sharp young guy. So, but if you have interest in that, if you'd please let Lauren know. It's September 12th again, and probably be in the afternoon. So if you have interest, we'll, we'll get that scheduled. And I'll kind of talk a little bit about the Association Conference in Raleigh. I really learned a lot. I thought it was a great conference. I know Commissioners will probably speak on it, but we learned a lot about lottery funding. And last year, if you remember, the Commissioners that went, we found out about this new pot of money that we've been successful in getting for capital improvement projects. That money's still there. But we also heard a great presentation on learning loss and how we're recovering from the COVID years, right? And what was lost. And there's actually some analytics out there, and I have to lean on Commissioner Howard because he understands all the, the data better with schools than I do. But there was some severe learning loss that happened across all sectors, all grades, all subjects. And there's a lot of work that has to be done. And I think that's some of the things we're talking about with our school system. There's some monies that are there now for some enhancements, but those monies are, are going to fall off. I mean, it's S R money. So something for you to think about as you talk to your Board of Education members, ask them about that report and some things that they think about that. So mention that. We also heard a great presentation on broadband. It happened to be the very last one of the conference. I'm glad we stayed for that. And we also made some connections. And I'm pleased to say that we have another project, we're going to talk, Steve and I are actually meeting with them tomorrow on, for a Great Grant Round Two. So we got Great Grant One, and we covered a whole bunch of area with that, but there were some gaps, right? There were some areas that were just hard to get to. We now have the application and have worked with the funding agency in Raleigh to get that funded. So you're going to expect to see that maybe your next meeting, maybe early October, but we think that'll fill in most of the gaps. There's still going to be some difficult to reach areas that are in the, you know, far reaches, but we're continuing to work on that. We also heard a great presentation on taxation, on all the different ways that, you know, counties look at sales tax and all the other revenues and how hard it is to forecast. But Mr. Hodges saw a report last week, and he pointed something out to me. So Gene, I'm going to put you on the spot. It was the September allocation of sales tax, which would be June sales.
Yeah.
Was the second highest in the history of sales tax. June 23, in State North Carolina, was the second highest sales tax collection, I think only by March of '23.
Three months ago.
Right, which would have been December sales. So when we talk about the economy slowing down, and Jeff talked a lot, and he's got a lot more data, but when it comes to purely buying things, it hasn't cooled off yet. So as Mr. Warren there, as the magic wand and the crystal ball he looks into, you know, it's still showing that upward trend in sales tax, which helps us keep the things we need there without having to raise taxes. So we'll continue to look at that. But I thought that was an interesting statistic, but I'm here for questions if you have them.
Jack, on the subject of, of sales tax. I'm going back a couple of years when we would order items online and they weren't taxed.
Correct.
Today, virtually everything you buy online is taxed.
Yes, sir.
How much, do we have any idea?
What that amounted to?
And the reason I was so sensitive to this, because I was, I owned a business.
Right.
And people would come in and get a quote and then say, well, if I order the same products online, and these aren't, aren't inexpensive items, just say $1,000, I save $70.
Right.
Today, that's not happening. Today, virtually everything that's ordered online is taxed.
Right.
How much is that to us? Do we have any idea?
I don't have any idea on that. It's a big number. And it's growing every month. Because as we shift from the traditional brick and mortar retail sales to the online platform, which we're clearly going to, if you go by a neighborhood, you see the Amazon boxes on the boards, right?
I mean, they're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
Everywhere.
So I would say, I'm going to look at Craig. I don't know if you have any analytics like that, but.
You have to make a request. It's not, it's not as clear, it doesn't break it out by brick and mortar or online, but we can certainly ask.
It's more of a curiosity thing because the very thing you mentioned, Amazon, the number of millions of dollars that come into our community every day.
Right.
From Amazon are now being taxed.
Correct.
And boy, if we weren't doing that, we would be, we would be losing a lot of money.
Right. So if you, one of the, I was talking to someone about recycling the other week. We were talking about products and what's out there. Well, cardboard, it's because everybody's ordering everything off Amazon and online. So you have a tremendous amount more cardboard than you did, say, 10 years ago, because the way the products are packaged. So we'll take a look at that.
That would be interesting.
But it's a huge piece of, of what we do.
Mr. Howard?
That's a good question, because when we were with the DOR, Department of Revenue, for the conference, someone was answering, someone asked a similar question, but I don't think it was as direct.
Right.
But it seemed like even the Department of Revenue had, there was some sales that may have happened in this county, but he felt like it was getting attributed to somewhere else.
Yeah.
And so he was asking that question, and the guy from, that used to work with Department of Revenue didn't really have a clear answer for him.
Right, yeah. I remember the scenario. That's a little more, yeah. It was basically if you bought something in Craven, but somehow it came from Lenore, who pays the tax, you know, does Craven get it, does Lenore get it?
He needs the tax money.
That's right. And there is a concept of refunds, right? So you may have a great month of sales tax. We may have record-breaking month, but then our nonprofit and governmental partners apply for refunds, and you get a huge amount back.
Yeah.
Then it kind of balances out what you get, so.
All right, any additional questions for the county manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A great evening.
Commissioners, before we have Commissioners' report, it has been mentioned already, we have two individuals, I think, with us from leadership of Craven. Y'all want to stand, introduce yourselves? We welcome you.
Hi, my name is Martha Anna Graves. I always go, my name, I work at Moen, I'm a material flow engineer. And by night, I'm the owner of Mars Aerial Arts and Fitness. So you might have seen us around town on silks or Europe.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Andy mentioned myself earlier, perhaps manager of operations.
All right, appreciate y'all being here this evening. Thank you. All right, Commissioners' report. Who'd like to start for us this evening? Commissioner Hunt?
Oh, okay.
I took that as a yes.
Okay. The first thing, one mention from the NCA ACC conference that I totally enjoyed was the fact that I got to not only attend a session on cybersecurity response, of course, that's a North Carolina Emergency Operations Center, but I also got to go through the center. And so I thoroughly enjoy that. Cyber space security, as everyone know, that the frequency and severity of cyber threats are growing at an alarming rate. Our Army National Guard and the State of North Carolina Assembly will provide an assessment to the counties and to the municipalities of cybersecurity risk. So this is, I think, extremely important that we take advantage of this to be proactive and try to ward off any threats before they attack us. Because once they do, then we're looking at either paying the fine for, you know, ransomware or rebuilding an entire system. So they, they offer a lot. It's all the states covering the, the cost of it. And I hope, I've shared this information with the other municipalities, and I hope everyone takes advantage of it to their fullest ability. So that was my favorite part of NCA ACC last week. I'd like to commend Mr. Shorter in the Airport Authority Board, and Jeff Woods, I hear your names all the time. One thing that wasn't mentioned tonight about the growth of our airport is that it is going to help keep our Marine Corps Air Station rock proof. And I don't want that to be overlooked. So everything you're doing affects so many different things, just not me visiting my family. So, thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I don't really have any. I didn't get to go to the meeting. However, I would, since, since I have this opportunity, I, I think that I should give a little shout out to my board chair for going, and some others, for going beyond the call of duty. As most of you know, I'm of age and I live alone. And he was very concerned when the storm was about to hit and he wanted to know if he needed to come over to my house to, to make sure that I was secure. And so, I appreciate that, you know. All of you seem to be very careful to make sure that I'm doing well, and so I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Sure. I'll, I'll also echo some of the things that Sherri was saying, the NCA ACC tournament, and Jack, Mr. White. I thought the conference was very useful. I like going to classes or sessions where you have the industry specialists there, people that know or the top of what they do. For instance, we went to the DPI thing and Dr. Corn was there and just the level of research and psychometrics that she kind of dove into was fascinating to me. Tomorrow, you will see some of those local schools releasing those grades. I know that our school is. It's a tricky thing because I, I don't know if I even had a clear answer from her. When you see your school have a really good year, like the school I did last year, we kind of were one of the first schools back from COVID. And this year, we kind of dipped a little bit. Not, we're still above, oh, probably below average, actually, when I think about it. But it's hard to keep having a growth, 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 you know, over the years and Ms. B probably knows that, being a principal of a school for a number of years. But getting to listen to Dr. Corn, I think, was a unique perspective for me. And then taking some of that data back to my school district was even neater. The Department of Revenue stuff was enlightening, things I didn't know. Of course, going and, you know, talking about broadband access in our county and watching Jack engage with those folks and still didn't determine whether we were the favorite county or not, but he taught, the guy was in a charge, was telling, you know, each guy in front, oh, your county's my favorite county. I'm like, hey, he just told me that. I thought I was the favorite, but Jack said not to bring that up. So, I, I enjoyed the conference, you know, whenever you're spending taxpayer dollars, to me, it's important to know that you're, you're bringing something back, you're better educated, we're getting, you know, he's looking into some of the things that they were talking about there with the additional grants for broadband. So, I feel like it was worth the taxpayer dime. I will say, just a clarification on the infographics, what I was asking for was more kind of a handout, because I feel, I feel like our economic team has a story to tell. And when I'm at a town hall or I'm at somewhere else, I just want to hand, you know, I can't remember everything Jeff tells me every time we drive around the county and look at all the things he's done, because it's a lot. It's not like one or two things. There's, I feel like there's hundreds of things. So, it would be nice to have something that's concise, kind of an infographic to tell that story of one of the important things that Craven County is doing and developing this county. So, thank you for that and I think that's all, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm not going to go over things that other commissioners have already talked about, so I will skip over to, to a couple of others.[1554.82]